Our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all. The roll please. Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny. Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Six present, one absent. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is a questions and comments on an announcement period of a general nature. If anyone in the audience wants to address the council on any item that's on our agenda, or any other item for that matter, that they have a question about, please feel free to come forward and address the council. Then let's move on to the approval of minutes of March 3rd. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll please. Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Six ayes. The minutes have been approved. Move on to our receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? I have a couple. Received a card from Mayor Gina Cunningham, the mayor of Woodridge. She wanted to give her thanks for our police department assisting in their, I guess, one of their police officers passed away. Richard, I won't even know how to pronounce his name, Zowadniak. Yes, and our police department participated with them in their, that event. So, a thank you from the mayor of Woodridge for your participation. Also Mayor Mickey Straub sent me a thank you for participating in our Citizen of the Year Dinner Dance. He loved the event. Hopefully he'll bring that to Bridge and so thrilled that he could be participating in there. The mayor's, another item, the mayor's Metropolitan Caucus sent me an email. March 29th is Earth Hour and they're suggesting everyone from 8:30 to 9:30 to switch off all their lights in a recognition of a conservation. And I guess in 2013, 150 countries participated and it was a very big success. I don't, it reduced electricity and carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide emissions dramatically. So, put that on your calendar and participate on March 29th. If there's no other communications, let's move on to the mayor's report and it gives me great pleasure this evening. We have a large audience today for a very special reason and we are so glad you could be with us. We have the Hinsdale South Dance Line with us today and I'd like to mention the names of all of the young ladies that are on the team. Emily Albert, Alexis Artovich, Elizabeth Bifaro, Paulina Brocato, Erica Carusa, Caruso, Dakota Dapkis, Madison Cassetti. If I mispronounce your names, let me know, okay? Natalie Carino, Anna Henry, Megan Ida, Isabel Jorgensen, Abigail Carbin, Kaylee McGuinness, Hannah Notice, Megan O'Malley, Nicole Palma, Mia Peak, Carla Porro, Carolyn Rhodey, Kelly Sunday, Sarah Thompson, Gianna Vancheri and Miguel. That is, is it Mike? How do you pronounce that one? Michael? Okay, I'm supposed to have a misspelling on here. Varkaladi? You are, and the team captains, let me point out the team captains and if you would stand so we could recognize you. That would be Elizabetha Bifaro, Carla Porro and Carolyn Rhodey. And our head coach here today is Courtney Gillette. Courtney, where are you? Very, very good. And the assistant coach is Heather Riggs, back there also. Just a little bit of a history about the dance line. The dance line runs from July through March and the dancers participate in the fall football season, followed by the winter competition season. And starting in early January, the team participates in local invitational dance competitions and their high scores at those invitational competitions qualify them for the state championship. In the team dance, Illinois State, at the team dance, Illinois State Championship was held on Sunday, March 2nd at the Peoria Civic Center and guess who won first place? Hinsdale South Dance Line won first place in the 2A kick category, second place in the 2A palm category and was awarded 2A grand champions for their highest score of the entire day. So, we'd like to recognize you and maybe the coach, would you like to come up? And after you accept this, we'll have all the girls come up for a photograph. But congratulations.
I appreciate all of our families that are here and the communities and the mayor for having us here.
If you want to talk to the mic.
Yeah, talk in the microphone because our.
We'd like to thank all of you for having us here today. It's a wonderful thing to have such a supportive dance line family through our school and through all of our parents that are here, but also to know that all the support that we receive throughout the year is also being extended by all of you. So, thank you to our city for having us. We appreciate all the support.
Very good. And would the dance team come up and Scott, have you got a camera that you can take a picture? Come on, all up in front here. We need to, we need to get a picture of all of you.
For our wall.
For our wall of fame upstairs, so, how about that? Okay, okay, I guess you know how to figure out who should be in the front and who should be in the back. Yeah, look at one photographer at a time. So, congratulations, girls. And thanks to all the parents that come out and I'm sure you're there for the, for the girls day in and day out and that's the best, best support they can have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Which parent is, Tina, which parent is that? Hey Joe, that's Joe Artovich, right?
Yeah, I recognized him. And his wife Nancy and then Kenny Dapkis' wife. Kenny's got the laundromat over there in our Heritage Plaza. His wife is the blonde in the.
Okay, as soon as those, as soon as those doors close, I think we'll.
I thought maybe they wanted to see the city of business, but you know.
Nope.
Yep, they cut out right away. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item under the mayor's report and that is our Darien Chamber of Commerce update from Clarabon Giovanni.
Good evening. Neighbors of Darien and the Darien Chamber are preparing for the 2014-2015 Annual Community Guide and Directory. All Darien businesses are invited to join the chamber to be featured in this publication. For advertising opportunities, please contact Kate Sullivan at 630-995-3482. 2014 vehicle stickers are on sale at City Hall for $3 each. The 14th Annual Darien Dash will be held on Sunday, May 18th at Darien Community Park. Online registration is now open. Once again, the Darien Chamber will award $2,000 to schools with the most race participants and $500 to local youth organization. If your business is interested in sponsoring this event, please call the chamber office at 630-968-0004. Chamber 101 will be held on March 26, 2014, 9:00 a.m. at First Merchants Bank, formerly Citizens Financial Bank located at 8301 South Cass Avenue. Are you a home-based business owner, wearing all the hats and filling all the roles it takes to run a successful business? If so, the Darien Chamber of Commerce invites you to the Solopreneur Connection Event. The kickoff event will be held on March 27, 9:00 a.m. at BMO Harris Bank located at 2275 75th Street. The Darien Chamber is hosting a multi-chamber breakfast panel discussion on Illinois's new medical marijuana and conceal and carry law. This event will be held on April 16, 7:30 a.m. at Ashton Place. Register online at darienchamber.com. Save the date for some upcoming ribbon cutting ceremonies. March 26, Smiles on Cass at 5:00 p.m. And tonight we have Dr. Francis Tan, who's going to talk about his new business that opened and we'll talk more about the ribbon cutting. April 9, Walmart, 7:30 a.m. will be celebrating their expansion ribbon cutting ceremony. April 23, new financial advisor, Tim Burke with Edward Jones at 5:00 p.m. The Indian Prairie Public Library continues its 25th anniversary celebration and they are inviting the entire community to their grand finale birthday party and ribbon cutting ceremony. Relive the 1980s with music, crafts, games, history and trivia. This all-age event will take place Saturday, April 26 from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. With the ribbon cutting at 1:00 p.m. Refreshments will be served. Don't forget to impress, dress in 80's style. At this time, it gives me great honor to introduce Darien resident and new business, Dr. Francis Tan from Smiles on Cass.
Hello, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Dr. Francis Tan and my wife and I are owners and doctors of Smiles on Cass Family Dental right here in Darien. Our office has one goal in mind and that is to serve the families of Darien and its surrounding neighborhoods with compassionate and high-quality dental care. We strive to make dental visits a pleasant experience for all members of the family by loosening up and letting our enthusiasm for our work show. My wife and I genuinely love what we do. We love helping people and having the chance to make a difference in their lives. We also love people and getting to know them. At the end of the day, it's about relationships. We want to be a part of your family and we want you to be a part of ours as well. It's that relationship that makes our work so rewarding. We are very excited to put down roots in Darien. My wife and I grew up in this area and have various strong ties to the community. My wife went to Fairview Elementary School, Eisenhower Junior High and Downers Grove South. After moving here during high school, I also attended Downers Grove South and even worked at the Darien Jewel next to our office through high school and college. It's great to be back in the neighborhood and see so many dear friends and neighbors again. We would love to become familiar faces to you and your family and invite you to stop by and say hello the next time you're in the area. We are located right between Jewel and Chuck E. Cheese on 75th and Cass in the former RE/MAX space. If you'd like to know more about us, I invite you to check out our website at www.smilesoncast.com or follow us on Facebook. Or you can also call the office at 331-481-9302. We'd love to hear from you. I'd also like to personally invite you all to join us for our open house on the evening of Wednesday, the 26th from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. Our ribbon cutting with Mayor Weaver is scheduled for 5 o'clock and we look forward to having you all join us immediately afterwards for drinks and some great food. It would be a great opportunity to see the office and meet each other. We also have some great prizes to raffle off, including Cubs tickets, a tablet and some gift certificates. We hope you'll be all able to join. Excuse me. RSVPing gives you an edge in the raffle, so we definitely recommend it. You can RSVP by emailing us at contactus@smilesoncast.com or calling the office. Thank you again for your time and we look forward to meeting you all. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, Dr. Tan. And now you're doing Cubs tickets. How about White Sox tickets? Just teasing, just teasing.
This is the south side.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming. Best of luck to you and your location. Is this your first office location?
Yes, it is.
Wow, great.
My wife and I are just out of, we've been practicing for six years, so I think it's about time to spread our wings and take on the.
Welcome. Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing everyone at our upcoming events. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
And I have no report this evening.
Okay, and let's move on to the city administrator's report.
No report, mayor, thank you.
All right, we're going to skip the clerk mosquito presentation this evening and move right to the Heritage Plaza redevelopment Phase 1 preliminary design. That's not easy to say, but I did.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, city council and our viewing residents at home this evening, as well as our general audience. First of all, back in November of 2013, at the goal-setting session, the city council approved the conceptual phase, that conceptual phase for the redevelopment of the Heritage Plaza, otherwise known as the corner of Plainfield and Cass Avenue to 1.69 acres. Now again, 1.69 acres basically includes the Heritage Plaza as well as what was referred to as the BP Amoco Station. On the corner of 75th Street and Cass, we have Chase coming. And I do say Chase is coming. We just got notification today that the permit has been issued by DuPage County. First of all, and are in the process of putting up a sign, coming soon. That should be up here, up at the corner within the next two weeks. Anyway, since then, the city council had agreed on a conceptual drawing that was brought forth by Nick Batistich Architects. Since then, back on January, Shive Hattery went to, was allowed to go to a contract for architectural services which included several phases. Those phases were the preliminary design phase, which is Phase 1. Phase 2, the construction documents, phase for warm dark shell design. Phase 3, construction documents for landlords, tenants, construction work. And finally, Phase 4, construction administration. This evening, we're here for the preliminary design phase. Mr. Wayne Mart will be presenting a brief overview tonight on what's referred to as Option Number 1 and Option Number 2, as well as a fountain slash clock that's going to be, that's designed to go on the corner of this development. Again, the design phase of Option 1 and 2 for tonight's illustration is to get the city council to look at the drawings and move on, where we can try to make a determination of Phase 1 or, excuse me, Option 1 or 2 and move on to the next phase of the construction project. So without any further ado, I'd like to present Mr. Wayne Mart and he'll continue here with the presentation.
Good evening, Wayne.
Could you pull the mic closer? Is that better? Hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'm happy to be back. We've done a lot of work since we last met. We took into consideration the original design that was presented before we were given our contract and we're coming back with some analysis that we've done with two different options.
Could you talk more into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. We've taken and done an analysis on the original design that was presented by the previous architect in Phase 1. And what we've come up with is two options. Both options, in our estimation, include or take out of inclusion from the original design, the clock tower. We felt that the clock tower in the original design, and I'll bring that up. This is the original design that we were given to start with. The clock tower was imposing tremendous lack of visibility for signage on the building. Especially on that one corner where the clock tower is, it limits access to that tenant. It was never considered to be part of that tenant on the end. It was something that was going to represent the entire shopping mall. And so it restricts that tenant. It also blocks view from Plainfield to the rest of the shops. And we also looked at the possibility of eliminating two of the drive-up windows, which was in the original site plan. And one of them was put on that side of the building with the clock and the seating area. However, that particular drive-up window on the south side of the building 1 that you see in this elevation would have had stacking of cars in front of the store because of the lack of stacking along the side of the building. So, in meeting with Dan in the preliminary meeting, we felt that on both sides, we don't want to have stacking of cars across the front of the shopping center. So, instead of having four possible drive-up windows, we're down to two drive-up windows that work properly, allow for a lot more than six cars of stacking, do not interrupt the traffic and safety of the center. Now, this is Option 1 with the clock tower taken out on the corner. We maintain the same kind of detailing that was in the original design. The original drawings that we had to work with were very sketchy, even the elevations that we had and we had to do some interpretation. But basically, the elevation of the original design had a jog in the facade where the signage is mounted. Those are usually restricting any signage relocation and teneting of the building. The goal of any developer of retail is to have as much flexibility to make changes and that allows him to keep his costs down. And that's what you'll get when you have the ability to move signs and storefronts without being dependent on the facade. We've got the same columns in the front on the piers. There's a covered canopy that has lighting underneath it. And so we've kept the character that was in the original design. The main difference is that we've eliminated the clock tower and I'll talk to that later. We're not eliminating it from the project, we're just relocating it. Now, we then had the option of making these changes and you can see different views that we created for this Option 1. There's the drive-through on the north sides of the buildings, which allows the traffic to stack on the rear of the building rather than across the front. And we have allowed for a sitting area outside because this will normally be a restaurant of some sort. So, we've allowed that on both buildings. A little closer view, show some of the detailing that we would have on this. These are all masonry buildings. This particular building has a lot more ifus on it than we would normally put on a building, but that was the direction of the original design. The rear of the building is quite clean and clear. It's for deliveries, so there isn't as much glass. There is security lighting back there. This is between the two buildings. So, we have a drive-through on the north side of Building 1, which is to the south. And Building 2 to the north will have parking, which increase the parking by eliminating that drive-through. So now we have more parking, which I think is important if you're going to have restaurants in the center. Again, this is the north side of Building Option Number 1, which allows also for outdoor seating. We did not show all the striping in the parking lot since that's not part of our contract that is being done by Burke and Associates. We're strictly showing the building.
And Wayne, if I could interrupt for a minute, can you back up just for the rest of the city council and the viewing members at home, what Option 1 basically portrays also is a covered awning type of canopy, if you want to say. So, we'll keep that in mind, you know, want to make sure everyone gets the full effect of that.
Any idea what the square footage on that one would be?
The buildings are the same square footage, Option 1 and Option 2. The difference, and I'll address it a little bit more when we get to the dollars per square foot, you're actually paying for a structural canopy that's not figured into the square footage on Option Number 2. This cost is close to $80,000 added on to the cost of construction and really in today's market is an unnecessary structure. We don't, we don't do covered walkways like that. Tends to block view of the stores. It's an added cost. We like to put the material back into the value of the building that is enclosing the tenant space. That is enclosing no tenant space.
I do remember us talking about that with the canopy. Now, in this design, how many feet is covered?
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight feet. Eight feet is sticking out. It's 92 feet long by eight feet. There are things in that canopy that we're using on Option Number 2. The front facade will just move back in line with the building, but the two sides, the roof, the roof structure, the soffits will all be added cost to the job. And again, this is not part of the leasable space, so the cost of maintaining this part of the building is a cost to the owner because the tenants are only paying for the square footage that they're leasing. And there's 1,500 square feet between the two buildings that is not recouped in the cost of construction for, from the lease of each of the tenants. Keep that in mind. So, it's going to be spread amongst all the tenants. It just makes that added effort to sign a lease and recoup the money that you invested. There are other ways of protecting pedestrians and it's very common to put warnings above the storefronts. And I'll show that in my second design. Any questions on this building itself?
You mentioned that there was a material you had more of that you'd like to use. What is that?
Ifus, it's a, what we call it is, it's called synthetic stucco. It is.
That's the brown portion of it?
Uh, no, the white portion. It's made to look like stone, but it isn't stone. It's, it's stucco. It's insulation that's coated with a color coating, synthetic stucco. It has to be maintained over the years. Certain colors that you would use, not particularly this, would tend to be affected by UV light. In this particular case, white stucco has to be recoded about every 10 years because it's very difficult to just wash it down. The dirt actually embeds itself in the surface, unlike stone. But it is an economical way to give the illusion of stone.
Wayne, can you go over the roof? I'm not sure if you can zoom into the roof lines on Option Number 1. I want to make sure that the city council opportunity.
I can back up so that we're not looking at a side view.
You're looking at the change in elevation?
The elevation from Cass Avenue as well as from Plainfield, so.
Yeah, we've got steps in the roof plane on this building that mimic the gable that was on the original design and added some features like the louver in the top, which has no real louver effect. It's just cosmetic because the roof is a flat roof behind that. But it does break the parapet line up instead of a straight shot.
Is there a reason that it's asymmetrical like that? I mean, it's not centered where the peak goes.
Yeah, it's arbitrary. I'm what you would call a symmetrist. If I put the building with that gable on that side, the second building is going to be right across just the bare image of it. It really doesn't matter. It's a preference. And if the board wants to move it anywhere, we can move it. It doesn't impact the building. Oh, any, any other questions before I move on to Building 2? Okay. Okay. Okay, option number two. Option number two is different insofar as that it has more variety along the roof line, more stepping. Um, the plane slightly changes, but it changes on the corner where we don't put signs. Uh, we've kept the columns, and they're free of the storefront. Uh, the storefront runs behind all the columns. We have awnings which present, and the colors don't get locked, uh, locked into particular color. We can change the colors. We just elected to have red awnings. Uh, you can have a variety of different colors if you wish. Uh, but they're set in and, uh, above each of the storefronts. It gives them plenty of coverage. Most of the shops here are destination shopping. Nobody is necessarily shopping from one end to the other, though they may go to the next-door food, uh, purveyor, uh, restaurant, uh, when they're going to the laundromat. But typically, this is not like Oakbrook where everybody is just walking around and enjoying the outside. It's more destination shopping. Um, we have, uh, allowed for, now let's see if I can get a view. This is a night, uh, nighttime view of that same building. Uh, we will have lighting in the arch that will light up the awnings with LED lighting so that the awnings keep their color at night. And, uh, it'll express the arches better at night. It's a linear LED strip, not very bright, but enough to give us a nice color on the awnings and, um, help illuminate the facade. We'll have up and down lighting on the piers. And of course, all the signage will be lit at night. And hopefully, all the storefronts are lit because we're going to have it fully leased. Um, daytime view of, uh, the, the building closest, uh, to the north, uh, to the Chase property. Uh, you can see that we've got an outdoor seating area as we had in the original. What we did introduce in both buildings is a two-tone brick effect. We have a tan brick to express the arches better, uh, with a stone base. That's still on the other building, the stone base is on option one. And then we have the reddish brick, the same brick that we had on option one. Uh, but instead of having a gable break in the roof plane, we've broken the plane with continuous cornice that has varied heights. Uh, we can adapt a little bit of this building into option one. Uh, but the big difference is the covered canopy that we're paying for that I feel is unnecessary cost.
Alderman Mackeyver?
This is why I didn't want to move my mind. Just, just so you know, um, the packet that we have electronically does not have these. The renderings are different.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, you know, if, if the, um, residents go online and look at it, um, option two is not what they're going to see. Yeah, the, the one that's uploaded is all, uh, flat. Doesn't show the changes in elevation on the roof line.
I'm sorry, the roof line, on the second one, option two, it's changed slightly. And that's what, I went back to the architect from our meeting late last week before I left on vacation and asked him to put a couple more elevations on there. So that's what he did, you're correct.
We picked it up, uh, and then, uh, Dan was on vacation. And, uh, but I had sent it into the office. I didn't know if somebody else was going to distribute it before the meeting.
Dan Swalz.
Yes, it is.
But this was something that the board wanted to have more variation in the, the roof plane. So that's what we responded to.
Can you tell me the difference in cost between the eighty thousand, uh, for the canopy in option one versus the awning in option two?
Well, um, the awnings will cost about a hundred dollars a running foot. So it's about nine thousand dollars as opposed to fifty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars per building.
And without the, um, the covered canopy, do you get more, um, rentable square footage then? Since the building's, not at all?
All buildings have the same identical, rentable square footage. It's just the, nobody, the tenants are not paying for that.
Okay.
Uh, ultimately, they could, I mean, in all the, the numbers put together, um, uh, you're going to break down the cost of the total construction and determine what rent you need to get a return on your money. Uh, so it makes it easier for you to adjust your rents if you're not going to have another fifty to eighty thousand dollars up there that you don't really need.
Alderman Mackey?
I talked to several tenants in the shopping center across the street when that was redesigned. They actually built brick pillars. And several of those tenants, while they were happy to be in that shopping center, feel that those pillars block their storefront. Uh, and it does, it provides a, an area for you to walk. It's protection from the rain, and that's nice. But there is signage in windows that is not seen because the pillars block the, uh, the windows. And the newest, the new, one of the newest tenants who just went in there, um, the liquor store, uh, he's very upset because a lot of his signage in his windows blocked by the pillars. So, um, you know, originally, when I, we looked at this, the first design, Batista's design, I liked the canopy. And looking at this and thinking about what they said across the street, I would actually prefer the, the option two, not just because of the cost. I actually think it looks nicer.
Well, uh, uh, we did the, uh, Darian Marketplace Shopping Center over by Walmart. And that doesn't have a canopy over the sidewalk. Yet we've gotten tremendous kudos about the design of that. And that is fully leased and getting good rents. Um, and it doesn't even have awnings above the, the storefront. And we're providing the awnings here just to add color, really. Uh, most people are dressed appropriately for the rain. They're not expecting to be protected from the weather by canopies over the building. And you're fully correct there, Alderman. Uh, I've been doing retail for forty years, and most of the retailers tell us is give us a storefront that we can see, that can see our product and give us a sign, and we'll do the rest. But when you put these architectural features that are purely there based on either the developer having a desire for a particular architecture or an architect who's imposing his design on it and not thinking about the tenant, uh, has to address the problems at these piers. Some of them are four foot wide, five foot wide, um, and from an angle, it could block the entire storefront of that tenant. So the columns that we put into these are right in front of the storefront. They have minimal effect on blockage of, uh, the storefront and the, uh, signage.
Just to make sure I have your numbers correctly for Alderman Belkey's question. You said it's the, the, uh, built-out would be fifty thousand per building as opposed, which per total a hundred thousand. So the difference between nine thousand and a hundred thousand?
No, 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 it's mis- that's misrepresented. The, the, uh, fifty to eighty thousand dollars is for both. You have fifteen hundred square feet total of canopy. Some of the facade that's on the covered canopy is just moving back to the line of the storefront. So you're paying, you're eliminating soffit, you're eliminating the end, you're eliminating roof structure and roofing and s- the soffit underneath that you don't have, uh, when, uh, or you do have when you do the canopy. So that cost is not the same as the hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot that we're going to spend on building the shell to get it up to the, uh, level of a, uh, warm dark shell. Because we're not tempering the space under the canopy, so I can't eliminate that. So it's, it's fifty to eighty thousand dollars. We're doing this all on historical record of projects that have been recently built. And it's possible that you could have, it might cost ten thousand dollars less, ten percent less, until we actually get out and, and bid this job. Um, we'll know what the real difference is. But I'll guarantee you that it's a lot more than those awnings are going to cost.
Several months ago, when you first came to us and you talked to us, you, you mentioned two types of, of structures. Masonry versus steel, steel or whatever. And you said one would require six contractors to be on-site at the same time, and the other one would only be one. Could you go back and cover that again?
Uh, it's a rule of thumb in design. The less people that stir the pot, the cheaper it is. Um, but it also, you have to look at different staging of construction. If we're, we're doing a masonry-bearing building here. We just recently bid a project in Lisle of about sixty-five hundred square feet and tried to do it with metal stud, um, with a brick veneer, sort of, uh, a residential-type construction. People understand studs and, uh, there's energy codes that have to be met for the exterior wall. And it is, we found it much cheaper to build it out of masonry and put rigid insulation between the brick and the block than to put up the metal stud because the metal stud is not capable of supporting the roof structure. So we had to add all kinds of structural, uh, structural steel around the perimeter to support the roof. And that offset the savings that we got from, uh, getting away from masonry. So with the metal stud, you've got one trade, carpenters. Um, you've got flashings, uh, which can be done by the carpenter or by the mason. And then you have drywall, which is dense glass gold, which is an outdoor chipboard that forms the sheathing. And then the mason comes in and puts the insulation in the masonry. And then everybody has to wait until that's all built and assembled by three different contractors before they can start working on the roof. With the mason, he can put up all the walls, it's in one trade. He comes, puts up all the walls, and then the steel goes right up on top of that. So we have simplified the, the construction time and cost. Um, since this building is going to be built, hopefully, in warmer weather and not over a winter, um, the masonry option is the best way to go. If we were going to try and build this building through the winter, uh, then I would think we could get some savings insofar as that we don't have to worry about the temperature because we're not putting up the masonry to enclose the building. We're putting up steel and metal stud. We can put the masonry up when it gets warmer, but still start the interior and start doing HVAC electrical. So what we want to do is get the building enclosed as fast as we can. And it'll all depend on the, uh, timing for the construction on this. But we've always assumed that this would be done in milder weather. And we would have all the masonry up before the cold weather.
Brian, go ahead.
Uh, Wayne, what lasts longer, the awning or the canopy?
Uh, the, the awnings, which are zumbrella, uh, in my experience, because of the quality of the material, last about twelve years. Um, the fixed canopy, uh, will in general last longer structurally. But the ifus on it, I would want to eliminate because the ifus only lasts about ten years and has to be totally replaced. It's not a matter of just going out there and recoating, refinishing. People think that, oh, we can just go out and repaint it again, but it's not that easy. Uh, too many coats of that material on there tends to start to degrade the texture of the material. So I, I, you know, in terms of a better building, you spend more money, you're going to get a better building. In terms of leasing, as I spoke with the alderman, there is no advantage to it. Um, as a matter of fact, as it's already been seen by the alderman here is that it's a, it's a, actually, uh, holds back the retailer from expanding his business and getting his advertising seen.
Wayne, I noticed that, uh, in these, in the handout we have here, it's, it's a red brick that you're using.
Yes.
I'm not clear what color is on that, that...
It's red, it's red.
Okay, um, is there a difference in, in, uh, brick pricing? I, I like the color of the, um, Bradford Kent look over on, uh, Seventy-Fifth Street. I think you alluded to the fact that that was your, that was yours.
Yes.
And it's a more of a brown color, I believe, or a tan color?
This is a brownish-red. When we do our sunset on this, it tends to redden up the building more than it is. It's a reddish-brown brick. But as we go through the process, we're going to bring samples for you to approve. The cost doesn't change.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Belkey?
Okay, for, for option two, does that mean that there's no ifus on this building then?
Uh, I have a minimal amount of ifus up on the cornice. As you can see in the elevation that I've got, I'm using a cast stone for the arches.
Okay, so very little. And then for option one, is there, we didn't really talk about this, but is there the lighting on the signs as well? It's the same?
On the signs.
At night, you know, the lighting?
The signs are lit up at night, yes.
Okay, that's the same.
They're backlit, internally backlit.
Okay.
There would not be, and there would be soffit lighting underneath that fixed canopy on option one. Some down lighting.
In, in the arches?
Uh, not in the arches on option one, only on option two. On option one, we've got storefront, which is lighting, um, underneath the canopy and really defines the arches that way. When we move this back and we put awnings there, the arches wouldn't get the light coming out of the store because the awnings would block that light. So what we've done is inserted unseen, uh, indirect lighting with LED lighting, which will last hundreds of thousands of hours with very little maintenance, um, and light those awnings.
I was going to say, for, um, purposes of comparison, I think that the entrance to the Darian Park District Community Center is an awning, uh, a cloth awning. And I think that's been up for six years so far, I think. It's been six years since it opened, correct, Dan?
That's about right. And Bona Beef too, for those of you familiar with Bona Beef.
But I mean, the community center's been around longer than Bona Beef. And, you know, we've had all kinds of windstorms and so forth, and it's still, and, and they don't take it, they don't do anything. It's been, you know, it's up all, all, all year long, so...
They're adjustable too.
Yeah, they have to, there's maintenance on awnings. They have to be tightened. Uh, you know, you go from warm to cold weather. Uh, these are, um, awnings which are, are tightened with, um, fiberglass rope, for no other description. And they have to be tightened up by the contractor, but not every year. And, uh, certain colors hold up better than others. Um, when you have a lot of ifus above the awnings, it tends to run down on the awnings. So, um, we've tried to minimize, minimalize that.
Alderman Shaw?
On option one, the only thing I keep thinking is, and my main concern is, what happens if there's a leak or all of a sudden underneath those canopies, they break off or anything like that? Does it happen more often with those?
For option one, option one's the fixed canopy in the front.
Correct, mm-hmm.
Well, you have the same problem with the roof over the tenant space. It's the same roof, it just extends eight feet out past the storefront to the, to that front colonnade.
Does it, does it run down holding water or anything like that?
No, yeah, it's the, it's the same flat roof. If you went on the roof of that option one above the canopy, it, it just, it would look like one larger building. The roof slopes down to the roof drains internally.
Okay.
As long as you maintain the roof of the rest of the building, that would be maintained with it. I don't have a problem with that.
I guess, one more question. On this ifus, if it's, it's kind of a problem in being above the awning, the, um, red awning in this case, is there another option that you can do instead of that?
A product, a different product than the ifus?
Other than the awnings?
Uh, no, a different product than the ifus.
I thought you had stolen over the awnings on option two?
I, I, no, I don't have ifus on the awnings. Um, that, that brown area is a face brick that...
Got it, so it, the ifus is at the top?
Ifus is only up at the coping, at the top of the building. That's it, it's minimal then.
At the very top, top.
At the very top. Uh, it is, it's least likely to, to be seen up close because it's such a distance above the grade. I like, uh, to, uh, address buildings, uh, for the pedestrian. So I put the nicer materials down at the pedestrian level. And if I'm going to use something like ifus, um, I would use it like that. That also could be done in metal, I've done it in bent metal. Uh, bent metal lasts longer, but it's a little bit more expensive. But we can price out both.
Copper is, uh...
Not copper, I would use, uh, prefinished aluminum, prefinished aluminum. And it's bent like that. It's used on residential homes to form, uh, veal fancy cornices, uh, can be very nicely done. But again, the bending is a labor cost. And the material's cheap, but it's the labor of bending it and, and installing it.
What are other, uh, options to the ifus on top? Because again, you're, you're going to head the ten-year maintenance item, no matter what, correct?
Yeah, less up there, uh, yes, it will be a maintenance item. I said metal, uh, we could look at stone. I've done it in stone.
Huh.
Live stone, basically.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's not real stone, it's cast stone, but it's the same density of stone.
But it would have less maintenance?
Yes, yes.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I'd prefer that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're, you're looking for a, a decision of which, which, uh, option we like?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Ted, did you have a question?
No, I was going to say I like option two, but that's just me.
Uh, go around the table.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for option two. I, I, I like the design of that upper...
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for option two, I, I, I like the design if that upper ifus is changed into some type of stone. That's preferable. But I like the, uh, I like the, uh, option two much, much better.
Alderman Belkey?
I agree, option two with the comment on the top, um, with the ifus. And just one other comment before I saw this drawing. Uh, when, you know, when I looked at other towns, we don't have downtown near the train tracks or anything like that. But when I do look in those areas, I do see a lot of awnings. Um, such as this, and I think that would, that would make a nice statement.
Alderman Belzak?
I just had a quick question first. Design one has four storefronts, design two has five, is that intentional that way or can they go four or five?
It's still the same front, one building is smaller than the other. One is seven thousand, one is seventy-four hundred. It might be that that's the case, I don't know which elevation you're looking at. I've got.
Well, I'm just looking at, at, at the front of each one of them. And one of them has five stores with five doors and the other has four stores with four doors and it's just.
For the same elevation?
Is it the same building?
Are you comparing building one to, or option one to option two? Yeah, option one, uh, has a different colonnade, uh, design. Let's go back to that. You see, that is, um.
That's four.
You see, that's got the, it's actually got four bays, five columns. But that's because of the architecture, the way it, it came off on the original design. Actually, the, I had a problem with the original design. It was designed by an architect who didn't understand retail.
In your, your own shop, you mean?
Huh, not my shop.
And just if I may interject here, basically what'll happen is, on option one or option two. Specifically, option number one. If you were to take the buildings, and let's say we had four tenants or five tenants. Where those columns are placed. On option one, that would have the ability to distort the business that may be taking up two spaces. Or three spaces, whereas on option two, you have more clarity. Where one business, let's call it one business, may take up three spaces. When I say three spaces, we're imagining that what we see on these drawings are the actual dedicated spaces. Keep in mind that all these interior walls, and especially with option two. Give anyone more flexibility of where to put the demising walls or partition walls. For a particular space. Where again, as an option number one, you may be limited just due to the pillars. That are projected further out and for the view of it.
Well, I think it's also the facade, if you take the, um, the pillars away. It looks like the way these buildings are designed. Option one shows four glass storefronts in each building, whereas option two shows five. Like shows more of a, shows five.
Fuller view.
Uh, well, if you go back to the option one, you have, imagine that that walkway is gone. You've got the, you've got the, the brick, the arched glass, the brick, the arched glass, the brick, the arched glass. So you count them, one, two, three, four, that looks to me like four storefronts. Whereas when you go to option two.
Yeah, I, I can address that particular, I see what you're seeing now. If you look at option one here, option one has arches above the storefront that mimic the arches in the canopy, colonnade. And option two, the storefronts are straight across and the columns don't interrupt the storefront. So what Dan was trying to say in this particular option, one way of getting around the problem on option one, if you like option one. Is to eliminate the arches that are, uh, on the storefront. And just go with straight storefront because there's no structural members in the storefront. All of the structure is out in those canopy columns that are supporting the canopy projected out. So we could eliminate and just go straight across there with storefront, which would give you. Uh, the possibility of subdividing the stores any way you want. But they wouldn't be coordinated with the pilasters that are supporting that canopy. So, you know, that, that's redeemable if we wanted to. So, you, you know, you understand that, Alderman, no?
I do, I, I'm just saying, it looks like option two, in addition to having three fans on that side of the room. Offers more flexibility as far as renting out the space and making it more cohesive looking.
Yeah, and we can improve on option one, the flexibility of the storefront, but that's about it.
Alderman Belzak, were your questions answered?
I did like, uh, it was answered and I do like option two better anyway.
Okay. And Sylvia, I think I just heard you say that you like option two?
Yeah, I did not like option two in our packet because it did, it had a flat roof. In terms of what we were looking at, um, seeing the new renderings, um, you know, and, and wa, and talking through it definitely changed my.
Get out forward that to the city council tomorrow. Again, it was, when I got it, it was too late for me to get it back out, but we did ask, uh, I did request.
Is the packet online too? So if residents were looking at it, they're going to see what?
I'd have to double check on the.
I sent electronic, uh, versions of it.
So, yeah, so, so, yeah, so the, the, the online version of the packet would have to be.
We'll just revise that whole portion, make sure it shows a separate running for it. Uh, direct connect, et cetera.
Okay, Alderman Seifert?
Well, I never really thought about the covered canopies blocking the storefront windows till you came to municipal services and mentioned it. And I've paid attention to that over the last few weeks and absolutely, it's, it's amazing how a covered canopy will block the front of the store. And when most of us are always in a hurry and looking to see where we're going to stop. I think that's, that's remarkable by itself, so I would definitely vote for option two.
There is another problem with it too, when you're walking under a canopy. You have to add additional signage so that you can tell what store you're going to. Because unless you go and walk out in the parking lot, you don't know where the next store is, what its name is. So what we do is we put blade signs on the piers. So that when you're walking under this canopy, you don't have to see the signage, you see the blade sign. So it's an additional cost of signage as well.
Alright, so I think we're in agreement on option two.
I'm sorry, Mayor, for, for option two, what our intent was to come back, um, uh, next council meeting, just to confirm that through motion. Since it's such a.
Okay.
But with, but with the, with the roof changes as you have them. And with the upper area, area not being the ifus, but being some type of brick.
Okay, or fake stone or whatever.
Yeah. We, we've taken note of that.
Okay, any, uh, do we want to make any decisions on the, uh, the separate parcel on the corner with the clock tower?
That's where I was going to go next, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay.
Oh, can I ask this though? I mean, we talked about the little bit of differences in option one and two, but what is the, uh, rough total for option two?
Uh, the cost differential, uh, with the canopy, uh, would be approximately a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot to get to warm dark shell. Um, with the, without the canopy, the differential is a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and forty-nine dollars. So you are saving quite a bit of money. And that can be refined, but it's going to be at least ten dollars more.
What was the cost, did you give for option one?
Option one, I had a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. That is plus or minus ten percent. Um, and then the same thing without the canopy, a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and forty-nine, plus or minus ten percent.
Thank you.
And that's, what does that get, um, as far as the building?
That gets a tempered climate building without any tenant finishes on the inside, no toilet rooms. Basically, we put rooftop units up there, we can heat the space. So it can go through a winter completely unoccupied. But, um, vanilla box is when we start dividing it by tenants and putting finishes in there. That's an added cost which is figured into the lease.
Okay, Dan, did you want?
I'm sorry, do you want to go over the, uh, clock, uh?
Yeah, I will.
Fountain clock, please.
I guess I could give you a number, I do have it here, on vanilla box. Both of these buildings, since we're talking about the enclosed space and not the covered canopy. Uh, it's a twenty dollar a square foot average. Now that's for the typical vanilla box, which is drywall painted. Note flooring, uh, ceiling, HVAC, lighting, complete toilet room. So that the tenant can come in there, put down carpeting or tile in its sales area. And put its fixtures in there and start business. Now that's the very basic, when you start negotiating with tenants, particularly a restaurant or something like that. You're going to be spending more dollars to get more dollars in rent. By giving them allowances for their work, not your work, their work. So you may spend upwards of fifty to eighty dollars for a restaurant. And, uh, another store like, uh, say the Laundromat would probably take, uh, the space with the basic, uh, vanilla box. Because he doesn't need all those finishes. So there's two ends of the spectrum and of course, the rents are different too.
Okay, Wayne, you want to go on the clock tower?
Let's go to the clock tower. Okay, this is a daylight version. This is distorted because we're trying to show both streets at the same time, they're certainly not that, it's not that angle, this is a distorted elevation. But what we're proposing to do here is use an ornamental, uh, style, structure that mimics the arches. And, uh, and has this effect. This would be pre-assembled, I mean, it would part, be partially assembled offsite and just brought out as a package. And built. The clocks, whether you have four or you have two, I don't see why you would need more than just two. Uh, one facing Plainfield and one facing Cass. The other side could just be blanks or they can just be open rings of same size as the clock. But this is more open, uh, doesn't detract, uh, from the landscape and the architecture behind it. It gives a, sort of a, like a Renaissance look, it almost reminds me of the Eiffel Tower and its feel.
The ironwork, you mean?
Yes, the ironwork, um, it's classy. And it can be lit very nicely at night and it almost becomes a lattice work because it's lit from inside and out. It costs a lot less than putting up masonry. And less bulky, less foundation. And also, it allows us to put this above a, what I consider a landscaped fountain rather than a formal spray fountain. Which requires a lot of maintenance and in most cases fails after about fifteen years because of the maintenance that's required. And, uh, those kind of fountains can't run all year round. The fountain that I have here can run all year round, never have to be turned off. Forms ice formations that are tremendous and they're lit up at night. So it becomes a feature all year round. You know, here's a nighttime view. If anybody is familiar with Aquascape, they do a lot of landscaped ponds and creeks. They're located, uh, they have offices in Downers Grove. But, uh, they're located up by the DuPage County Airport. And, um, they are nationally known. They bring stone in from Missouri to create a natural stone, uh, waterfall with pools at different levels. So there's a constant flow of water creating a very melodic feeling to it. Drops down, disappears underground and is pumped back up and just keeps virtually circulating. Uh, the fountain stores about five hundred gallons underground below the frost line. I've got one in my backyard and all during this winter it ran, never froze up, so it's.
Do other municipalities, is there a municipal, like, water fountain like that somewhere in the area that we could see?
I certainly can find out for you. But, uh, this is a trend, uh, in shopping centers to get away, even Oakbrook is eliminating a lot of their fixed fountains and going with landscaped areas.
We could go to his backyard.
Dan?
You can come over to my backyard and see.
Did you, did you share that pamphlet I, I gave you regarding clock towers, or?
I know we had talked about it, it was presented, um, so again, we ended up kind of.
With that one, okay.
Yeah, two, combining two things into one, just because of the space.
Okay.
Yeah, this, um, has no detriment to the architecture of the building. Actually, this fountain costs less than putting in a built-in circular fountain with some kind of spray to it. And you get benefit all year round. The estimates that we would have for all the landscaping that you see here and the fountain would be a forty to fifty thousand dollars. Now that's all the landscaping on the corner. Uh, the trees, the benches, the pavers, the fountain. Uh, the tower is going to be about the same amount, forty to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, if I had gone with masonry, it'd be substantially more. Uh, the clocks is simple clockworks. I can guarantee you that that clock, even if it's maintained, will not last more than twenty years, you'll have to replace it. These clocks just require such maintenance, especially in the winter. In warmer climates, they last longer. The freeze thaw just kills them.
How about the metal itself, how long, how much maintenance do you have to do on that?
Nothing, it'll be an anodized finish on it.
So it won't rust?
No.
Now, are there any requirements, I know in some kind of structures like this, where you have to have open space in case of. You know, what are the, it'd be for insurance purposes or something in case, uh, I don't know, falls or something?
Open space, there would be, we tried to prevent people from being able to climb into this. I can't guarantee that kids won't go through the flower bed and climb into it. But I'll guarantee you one of these pools that has, you know, maybe a foot of water in it. You know, the spray type where people throw coins, we've got it in Downers Grove, we got down by the train station. There, there maintenance, you can talk to the mayor, there, there maintenance. And that's got the different nozzles that shoot up, but we don't use it during the winter. We just use it during the spring, summer and fall. And I think in this particular location, we're not near a train station in the downtown area. You're not going to get any foot traffic, a great deal of foot traffic. It's going to be from people that may be over at the restaurant and can walk across the street. And sit around and look at the fountain and enjoy that, that situation.
Where's this, I, I guess I'm still confused as to where this is.
Plainfield and Cass.
It's right on the corner of Plainfield and Cass.
The BP property.
The BP property.
Okay, so that's not, that's not parking for the, this shopping center area, that's still, that's an open parcel?
A corner of it.
A portion of it. That will be on the corner, yes, that's the goal. The goal was to put that on the corner, the, the exact dimensions, that needs to go, that'll be in the next phase.
But Dan, on your, on the site plan itself, it shows where that carve-out section is, we just didn't know exactly what would go there.
Yeah, if you don't have a site plan.
Back on phase one, right there, see the green space towards the, uh, bottom, uh, bottom right-hand side? That's where it's, uh, it's very, it's small, but it's nice.
You know, I, I, I guess I'm not opposed to the clock, I, I just don't see the point of the fountain, it seems like a, a lot of money, the location. I would, you know, unlike, um, shopping centers that have security, you know, I'd worry about vandalism in that location. I don't see that being, you know, the busy streets that they are, I don't, I don't see people congregating by that fountain, but that's just my personal opinion.
I think it becomes our identity, I think it's going to give an identity to, uh, to the whole area.
I think you'd notice the clock, but the fountain's under the clock anyway, so I'm not sure that the identity would necessarily go away by virtue of eliminating the fountain.
I'm, I'm with you on that, I just, I just think that that, whatever we put there.
Right.
Is going to be a focal point for the city.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of the fountain, it's something different. That's, the green space there is small. And the fountain adds more to that. I think it's an area where you will have some people just go there and sit and look and watch it.
The original goal was for a park setting with some benches.
I mean, I, you know, it's not a lot of green space, but I, I, if it's a little bit of green space, then I just assume have it be a very classy use of, of green space. So I like the fountain idea.
We could, we could move that driveway over to give it more green space, couldn't we?
I, I think it's a sufficient amount of green space, especially with the walkway, that will be designed from the, the building coming across the parking lot. I think from what I've seen so far and just scaled out, I think, I think it's an adequate size, to be honest with you.
With the, with the chase sign that's going to be on that corner and the clock tower and the fountain, are we going to have an issue with, uh, site going from Plainfield on the Cass?
No.
Or blocking the, uh, the shopping center again, the, that's like a critical drive corner for people that are looking to, to see what's in that shopping center, you know?
The sign would not, the sign would not be going right in front of the, uh, the clock tower, it would be going closer to the driveway entrance, correct?
It would be on the corner where specifically it would be adjusted to and the orientation of it. I don't have that full design yet, we're still waiting for Chase to come back with that. It is a ground monument sign though, I can't tell you that. It is a ground monument sign though, I can't tell you that. In conjunction with that, you know, we would look at where that sign was to be placed, so there wouldn't be any type of tra- I, I can tell you right now, there will be, there will be no traffic impact, especially the way the parking lots or the ingress egress for the parking lots are currently designed, because that's what was looked at already.
But Dan, we know the easement area, we just don't know the exact spot in that easement area?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's a matter, you know, does that clock tower, fountains get moved over five feet, ten feet, whatever the case is, so, you know, those are the fine elements of where everything gets positioned to and how.
Yeah. Alderman Shauer, did you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question, on the fountain, would it be the same color as the building or could you make it that way?
It's going to be, the fountain is made of natural limestone.
Okay.
Be, look like a natural outcropping of limestone that has age and moss on it. Because what we've done in our fountains that we do around our creek is we use stone that's brought up from river country in Missouri and it's got the cracks and the wornness and and it creates, it looks like it's been there for a hundred years. It's not a cut piece of limestone, cut to geometric shape, it's a very natural look. With landscaping and what we have done in different clock tower designs is the towns use the garden clubs to, to come there and and, and do the landscaping as part of a project that they want to do, a lot of them, because this is the entrance to, to Darian. And whatever design you do with that low sign for Chase, I think it should say welcome to Darian or whatever you use as your logo. On a low, I would consider a nice rough stone with floating letters on it. That would match that landscaping under there and give a natural look rather than building something out of brick.
How, how big is the fountain?
The fountain, well, the, the underside of the, the width of the clock tower is sixteen by sixteen. So what we wanted to do was fill up that sixteen by sixteen and sort of bleed it out on either side, so it's an irregular shape. So that the clock tower's structure is sitting in this natural setting with flowers and grasses around it and this multi-level rock formation which the water comes out of the top, drops into pools on three sides and cascades down like a waterfall to a pool that vanishes at the bottom and it just recycles. We actually put plantings in the rocks, flowers and the perennials, they come up all the time. There's water plants can be left there all year round, irises and so forth that can be put in there, a lot of water plants. And then you have a, a perimeter landscaping which is what I'm saying is preventing people from sitting inside of that clock tower structure. We have benches that we'll have around there with permeable pavement to allow, you know, to drain, so we don't have to build drainage structures out on that corner for the drainage of the site.
Well, we have an active Darian garden club, so I will approach them and ask them if they'd like to get involved in this project.
Absolutely, love to have them involved.
Alderman Belkey, did you have another question?
Yeah, a couple thoughts. It is a busy corner, so, you know, I would hope that the seating setting area is away from, you know, the traffic that's turning. The fountain, I don't know how much that particular piece costs, but, you know, that I, that I'd like to look at more, it's, it's not, you know, it's something that isn't that crucial, I don't think, to the development, although it would be a nice thing to have, I suppose. And then when you talk about signage and you, you mentioned signage before, where are you picturing this sign?
Well, it would be right on the clock tower itself, but.
Towards the bottom or?
I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking of, just, it just came to mind.
If we put a low wall, it's got to be out of the sight lines for making that corner turn, which typically around that corner would be about fifteen feet. It's a sightline triangle. So it would be looking at the site plan halfway between the sidewalk and that round. This is the old pond detail that was done.
I think we're referring to the, the sign out of welcome, okay.
The sign for Chase and for Darian, the one that would be right on the corner, should be low. I, I would say it needs not to be higher than eight feet.
Well, I was mentioning that I would, I was thinking about a, a sign right on the clock tower, lower than the clocks obviously, which would advertise the activities in the city of Darian, have you seen signs like that?
I've seen it, but are you talking about an electronic sign?
Possibly, yes, and I think there's, what did, what did Culvers use, they changed the, they changed that, it's not electronic.
It's a hand box lettering, is that referred to it as, the black letters on white background, box letters.
Oh, were they change?
They're interchangeable, they're manual.
They're manual?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't recommend it, if I was going to put any sign, keep the signs on the corner with whatever you're going to do. If you're going to use a changeable letter type, don't use the letters, they fall off. Use electronic letters, you can control that, you can program that from City Hall, you know? So you can have announcements on that sign, but it needs to be studied with, with the welcome to Darian and Chase so that everybody is served properly.
So what's the next step?
Well.
Dan, I think Dan can address that.
Yes, and I'm sorry, what'll happen right now is again, if there's a consensus on option number two with some of the modifications referring to the.
Ifis.
The ifis?
Ifis, as well as the top of the building, natural stone, et cetera, et cetera. We'll go and provide a recommendation back to the city council next meeting. And that will basically move us into the next phase, which is referred to as Phase Two Construction Documents Phase for Warm Dark Shell Design. So that'll be the recommendation by through a motion, our next city council meeting. In conjunction with that, if we can get to the type of, a motion, not a motion, but basically some more thought process into this fountain. What I'm hearing is while we liked the clock tower and we liked the wall of the fountain, some people don't like the fountain. What we could always do is option it out.
I'd like to see alternates to that, the use of that corner. I, I like the idea of the clock tower or, or a tall structure that is, you know, like the way it's represented now out of metal that you, that is kind of sheer almost, so that you could see through and it's not obstructing necessarily the, the shopping center itself. But, you know, I just think it's a, not a very practical location for a fountain. And so I, I personally would like to see options to other ideas for, you know, how, how, what else you would do with that space as far as, you know, recreation, whether it's, you know, seating or whatever.
Keep in mind, we need to be careful how much more we ask the architect to do.
I understand.
If we pull away from the concepts and start redesigning things, we'll have extra charge.
I, I think what we're hearing is that all we want is an option for the, on the fountain, you know, just, just to be given that.
I like the tower, I like the fountain, I'm not sure I like the fountain right there. I don't, I don't, not sure that we're going to get much activity on the fountain and, I mean, it would just, to me, seem like more of an aesthetic thing than anything else.
And maintenance, if we're going to be responsible then for that corner, you know, again, it's, I think of it as, you know, it'll be unsecured, it'll be potential, you know, a target, especially since it'll be then under that structure, you know, potential for vandalism or skateboarders or liability, whatever the case may be. Originally, when we envisioned the development where there was the green space between the buildings where it was more of like a square type setting there, that, it made sense to me there. On the corner, that idea, that idea doesn't make sense to me, but that's.
Okay.
Right, the clock tower is now incorporated with the fountain just due to the space and the change of the concept plan, so again, if you want to take a poll, Madam Mayor, for a clock tower only or for a combination of?
For option of all. Well, I, I'm, I'm, what I thought I was hearing was we, we all like the clock tower, but I think we want an option on the, on the fountain to give us a separate price for that as opposed to including them both in, in the plan.
Could I?
Is that, is that, is that the question?
I liked both, I, I thought it created an identity for Darian, I like both, I like the fountain and I like the clock tower.
Alderman Shauer?
I'll be honest, I just like the fountain, the reason being with the tower, I'm just wondering if it's going to block the view from the, from Plainfield. But I'd go either way on this one.
Okay, so we got two for clock and fountain?
I'd, I'd option it both ways, in and out.
Yeah. Alderman Belzak?
Ah, I like the fountain and the tower.
Okay, alright.
I already said what I think.
Yep. And, that's right, we, yeah, and we're, we're still going to option it, you know, so.
That's enough direction for staff, thank you, yes.
Very good, alrighty, thank you, thank you Wayne.
Okay, I ran out of power anyway, so.
Thank you very much.
Did you?
Yeah, my battery lasted.
Okay.
Hey Wayne, can I just ask one more thing and make sure I'm clear? On option two with the two buildings, the drive-through is on the north side of one building and, or north side of both buildings, right?
Both buildings, north side, so that your stacking is always counterclockwise around the building.
Right.
And just to interject on that point, there's always the opportunity for the other two buildings on the corner, also they have drive-throughs. The key thing is the type of business and the stacking that they will provide. So again, that's just a side note for the city council, if, you know, drive-throughs become the next generation.
There is a, there is a retailer out there that is pre-prepared food so that you wouldn't, we, wouldn't have stacking required because they are coming to pick up something they ordered and it's a pickup at a certain time, where most drive-throughs, you get that, I'm going to go in and get a hamburger or something and so you never know how many cars you're going to have there, so you have to provide for six cars of stacking by code. But in this particular situation, they can either drive up and park, go in and get their package, or they can go to the drive-up window and pick up the meal that they ordered, it's usually a full dinner or something like that.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, yes.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got your direction, Dan?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the treasurer's report, Treasurer Corin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this evening I'm requesting approval of, of warrant number thirteen fourteen twenty-one on the amount of five hundred two thousand twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended March sixth and the amount of two hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents for a total to be approved of seven hundred seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents.
Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shauer, discussion? Roll please. Seifert?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. The warrant has been approved, now the monthly report?
Revenue and expenditure report for the, well, ten months ended February twenty-eighth reflects general fund, year-to-date revenue of eleven million five hundred thousand four hundred thirty dollars, expenditures of nine million one hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars for a fund balance of three million three hundred eight thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars. Water fund year-to-date revenue, three million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred eleven dollars, expenditures of four million seven hundred ninety thousand two hundred and two dollars for a fund balance of seventy thousand four hundred and five dollars. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue, five hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars, expenditures of six hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars for a current balance of two hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, sixty-three thousand thirty-five dollars, expenditures one hundred thirty thousand one hundred seventy dollars, current balance, six hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue, four million four hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars, expenditures of two million nine hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars, current balance of five million three hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. And the capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue, five hundred and four thousand three hundred and six dollars, expenditures of four hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, current balance, thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Any questions for the treasurer on that report? Then let's move on to standing committee reports, Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just briefly, as a reminder, next Monday, March twenty-fourth at six-thirty, municipal services committee will be meeting here in the council chambers.
Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a reminder that the next police committee meeting will be on Monday, April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, six P M. in the police training room across the parking lot at the police department.
Thank you, Alderman Shauer?
Yes, our next admin, our next admin finance meeting will be held at six P M. on Monday, April seventh, two thousand and fourteen in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions and comments agenda related by any of the aldermen? Well, if anyone in the audience wanted to address the council on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay, let's move to, well, old business, we have no old business, I'll move right to the consent agenda. We have items A through D on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is a motion to approve a resolution continuing our electrical aggregation program in the city of Darian and continuing to engage NYMEC to act as our energy consultant to solicit bids and provide customer service. Item B is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Clark Mosquito for an additional three years. Item C is a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance O dash twenty-six dash O six. Item D is a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance O twenty-eight, two thousand twelve. And both of these, these property taxes are within our water department for projects that we've done in our water, in, in our water department. And I think we have historically abated these every year. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert? Excuse me, Alderman Belzak? Seconded by Alderman Marzak? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm telling you.
It's been a long.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not feeling well, guys, I should, probably shouldn't even be here, but Alderman Marques?
Thank you.
Or Marzak?
Yeah, I'm telling you.
It's different.
I'm glad.
Yeah. The roll please. Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shauer?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. Yeah, that was a mixture of Marques and Belzak, I think, working there. Under new business, we have item A, a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance O thirty-two thirteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shauer, seconded by? Alderman Belkey? Discussion? We did an adequate discussion during our work session, I don't know if anyone wants to add on to that.
I'll, I'll add on to that, so we did have a lengthy discussion and one of the, I think that we all like the idea of, of this. However, there are some concerns in, not concerns really, but there are some things that we thought of that are just making us not as comfortable to pull the trigger on this one right now, things such as sales tax being flat for some time. We had some water main breaks this year and we're, have to invest in some equipment to help that go more efficient. There's some capital projects still that are troublesome, I, I brought up the sunrise pictures for, for rain and the improper drainage there and also with this winter we've had, you know, we're, we're a little skeptical of what's going to happen when all this melts and we're looking at our streets. And the last thing was the Heritage Center and if we don't sell the property, if that's something that the city wants to tackle and in that case, then if we abated the four thirty-three thousand, it's possible that that might be bonded at the end of twenty eighteen, I think. So some of the discussion we had.
Alderman Shauer?
Yeah, just for the record, I'm going to probably be the only one that's going to vote aye for this and I'm just going to make the statement. Forty-nine dollars is the amount that we're going to abate per household, okay? Big thing is, and I'm going to reiterate this, it's going to be the water costs. That's going to be our main issue going forward for the next two, three, four, five years, basically. And the only reason I'm voting for the abatement is to offset the cost for this. As I like to say, and I'm going to reiterate this again, our water costs are going up by two million dollars and I want everybody to understand this is a pass-through cost for everybody and this is the reason why I'd like to see that. That's the only reason why I'm going to make that statement. But at the same time, you're also going to be looking at the fact, what happened with this winter, you're going to have a lot of water main breaks, have a lot of overtime in this area and for all intents and purposes, you're going to have a lot of, you know, infrastructure issues with water. So like I said, I'm just trying to prepare the people at home, that's the reason why I'd vote for this, that's my main reason, so.
Thank you. The roll please. Shauer?
Aye.
Belkey?
No.
Belzak?
No.
Marques?
No.
MacIver?
No.
Seifert?
No.
One aye, five nays and one absent. The motion fails? Let's move on to questions, comments and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Marques?
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder that this Sunday, March twenty-third, the Darian Lions Club will be holding their annual pancake breakfast at, um, Eisenhower Junior High School. Uh, we're looking forward to having a nice crowd. We usually get about fifteen, sixteen hundred people come out for that event. In addition to that, I just wanted to thank, uh, Bonnie Cussera and the, uh, Darian Citizen of the Year Committee for, uh, for the wonderful event we had a week ago Saturday honoring John Paterowski. They did another bang-up job. It's a lot of work. They planned it well and, um, I think it was a nice night and I think John enjoyed it very much.
Thank you. Alderman Seifert?
Just like to remind everybody to go out and vote tomorrow, please, yes.
Yeah, and there's adequate time to vote, for heaven's sakes. They open the polls at, I believe, six and don't close until seven, so there's no reason why even working steps can't get there to vote.
The weather's supposed to be nice tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that people are, you know, I, I did get asked, you know, what, why should I vote? There's nothing going on. And I said, there's actually a lot going on from a state's perspective.
Well, that, that's, yeah, that's the troubling part about primaries. Uh, this is the most important, frankly, the most important election, the primary, because this is the candidate you're choosing that's going to be running in the, in the general election in November and if you don't choose well now, uh, it's gonna be, maybe a difficult-
The choices will be slim.
That's right, that's right. It gets slimmer, so.
Gotcha.
Thank you all for, uh-
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, yes. A motion, motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey Tom, do you have tickets for the, the breakfast?